This meeting to order. This is the October 26, 2022 Mayor and Council Workshop. I'd like to ask for roll call, please.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
And Councilmember Weiss.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public religion that stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we have the one item workshop this afternoon, and it is item number one, which is authorization to take the following actions for the beachfront improvement feasibility study phase two: receipt of the conceptual alternatives and concur with the following staff recommended options: reduced height option for the Junior Seale Bandshell Alternative, option C, for the Junior Seale Amphitheater, and option A for the Junior Seale Beach Community Center; authorization for staff to proceed with preliminary design plans and commence environmental review of phase two in coordination with the ongoing Pierview Bridge and Lifeguard Headquarters project; appropriation of $400,000 from the assigned infrastructure reserves account to the beachfront improvement feasibility study phase two project account. We're going to begin with a report by Senior Civil Engineer Dara Woods.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Dara Woods, Senior Civil Engineer with the Development Services Division Department. The item before you today is the beachfront improvement feasibility study phase two, and today's staff is recommending that City Council take the following actions: receive the conceptual alternatives and concur with staff's recommended options for the feasibility study; authorize staff to proceed with preliminary design plans and commence environmental review of phase two in coordination with the ongoing Pierview Way Bridge and Lifeguard Headquarters Project; and appropriate $700,000 from the assigned infrastructure reserves account to the beachfront improvement feasibility study phase two account. Some background related to this study is the need to enhance the beachfront area has been an ongoing priority for the city for a number of years, most recently seen through the completion of Phase One, the Beach Operations Center. On May 20, 2022, City Council authorized staff to proceed with Phase Two of the beachfront improvement feasibility study, and in January of 2021, City Council approved a professional services agreement with Johnson Favreau to complete this study. Separately but concurrently, work has commenced on the Pierview Way Bridge and Lifeguard Headquarters Project, and staff proposes to evaluate and plan this beachfront area cohesively and consolidate the future efforts for both projects, and these efforts include the preparation of the required environmental documentation in accordance with CEQA, the Local Coastal Program for the City, and the California Coastal Act. With that, I would like to now defer to our consultant, Steve Johnson from Johnson Favreau, to discuss the feasibility study process as well as the recommendations.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. Briefly, just a reminder of—
Hello again.
Hello again to all of you. Briefly, just a reminder of the study site boundary: North Pacific Street forms eastern side of the study site, Strand the west, Junior Seale Community Center to the north, and Betty's Lot to the south. We are tasked with exploring potential opportunities for improving the Junior Seale Beach Community Center, as well as the Junior Seale Pier Amphitheater and Bandshell, and the plaza space in between the two facilities. As this is a feasibility study phase and not a design phase, it's really about configuration and scoping. Renderings that are presented are illustrations of design concepts and are not final design proposals. Design were it to happen, were you to go forward, will occur in future phases and will be an iterative, community-driven process, looking at many options for actual design of the facilities. Again, we are also tasked, or goals of the facility was first, to understand the needs and community priorities. We also needed to, with you, understand the existing conditions of buildings and the site here, as that weighs into the options that we would develop in terms of the lifespan, expected lifespan of the existing finishes and systems. I do want to reiterate, as you tasked us, that the Community Center and the Pier Amphitheater and Bandshell are both the priorities of this feasibility study, and its key point is really to identify with you or provide assistance in identifying essentially the planning for infrastructure and facility improvements, because they do indeed age, and it's prudent to engage in a planning study to identify capital costs associated with any potential future project. We had extensive outreach, ten community meetings in the discovery phase going between August 2021 and December 2021. In the option development phase, one community outreach meeting and one Parks and Recreation Commission presentation. And in this final documents phase, again, one community outreach meeting, another presentation to Parks and Recreation Commission, and of course, this afternoon's City Council workshop. Available to you and also online to the public are three documents. Two of them are associated with documenting the discovery phase, the discovery phase report, and the site facilities condition assessment, and those are available on the city's website, as well as the final report that documents the findings and recommendations of this study. So proceeding right to the recommendations, starting with the Junior Seale Beach Community Center. What is proposed to you is really recommended a restoration of the building to, in keeping with the existing architectural character of this mid-century building, which is much loved in this community. But there's a second goal. It's actually to bring it new life in terms of upgrading its systems, its finishes, to bring them into the 21st century along with code requirements, to essentially give another generation of Oceansiders extended life of this facility. We reviewed three options. The recommended option that I just showed you, which is a no addition but renovation of the building with no addition, or structural change to it referred to as option A in your packet, but we studied two other options. Option B, which was a more extensive interior and exterior renovation, but accompanied with a modest addition to the east of the facility to add some programming to the building. Option C included also an extensive renovation interior and exterior, more extensive than is proposed in option A, but with an even larger addition on the east and south. It was clearly a consensus of this study that we are recommending to you option A, which is essentially keeping the building as is with a refresh, and that's really what was stated from the get-go from the community as a high priority. The facility is very much loved in the way that it is, and it's the idea of giving it additional life. In that way, we are keeping improvements to minor cosmetic improvements, ADA path of travel and accessibility to provide code compliant disabled access to the facility, and we are really limiting it to avoid any structural upgrades, and that means floor area additions to the building of any kind, as that will trigger a greater review and scrutiny. What is included is a renovated plaza and proposed public art and new building signage to commemorate the dedication of the building, as you have, in honor of Junior Seale. We are pursuing this strategy because there are less stringent requirements in terms of California Coastal Commission review, were we to pursue a project that's really tied to maintenance, repairs, and cosmetic renovations, which is what is being recommended. So this aerial view looking towards the southeast, starting at the upper end of the slide, illustrates the renovated plaza, which has really opened up to facilitate programming associated with the Community Center by removing some of the planters in that area. What we are also illustrating in that review is the proposed Pier Bridge ADA ramp, which provides access to a proposed Pier Bridge elevator, not a part of this study, but evidence of our coordination with that project team and understanding what will be accomplished with that project. Then, of course, the renovation of the facility, but adding no floor area to the facility, and then improvements to the parking lot in terms of restriping and refinishing, but most importantly, adding a ADA accessible van space and providing path of travel for compliant ADA access to the building entrance. So in this plan view with North Pacific up at the top, you're seeing the proposed concept of the Pier Bridge ADA ramp as currently developed. It, again, is not in a design phase, it's in a scoping phase, but we are showing it for coordination purposes. And then here, the required, what would be code required ADA path of travel requirements to be accommodate the disabled, providing access from a disabled parking space to the building entrance, significantly relocating electrical service that currently blocks that entrance to the facility. Included would be new restrooms in place, but then a fairly dramatic restoration, again, of the finishes, materials, systems within the building, excuse me, including even the option of redoing the glazing to let, A, more natural light into the facility and to be able to experience the beachfront from within the facility, but, B, also improve energy performance with new insulated, high-performing glass that reduces solar heat gain. You're also seeing that we are, again, proposing opening up the plaza for the kinds of events that are programmed in association with the Community Center. It is, after all, a community recreation open space, and as you can see, the opportunity for public art as a way of commemorating, again, the legacy of Junior Seale is something that the community very much appreciated. I do need to remind all of you that with this recommended option, we still are left with an undersized court area. We can't change that, won't change that, it remains unchanged, nor, something that was mentioned in comments, are we providing any additional court area. We're not expanding the building or providing additional basketball court space, and there really is no increase in recreation classroom quantity or size. And it's important to always acknowledge that the building remains at sea level, and that, as we pointed out to the community and to Parks and Rec, that future potential storm damage and anticipated sea level rise that we should all be planning for is really not and can't be addressed with the facility and its current configuration. And our strategy is really an acknowledgement that any more extensive renovation option trigger much greater potential scrutiny with the California Coastal Commission, hence the recommendation for option A. So the path forward is to give new life to the building, extend its, the expected life should be about 75 years, with refreshed technology, systems, finishes, materials, lighting, as I said, high-performance glazing that would provide better energy performance, and certainly improving the programmatic function of all of the spaces in the building and the courtyard to the front. What we heard at the final community outreach meeting, there was general widespread agreement on the renovation scope proposed and recommended. Many liked restoring the building's appearance, many loved that old image of the building, in particular with community recreation actually taking place in front of the building, and all seemed to appreciate the incorporation of public art, and specifically as a way of honoring Junior Seale. And of course, all said in your community, any renovation should include improvements that improve the energy efficiency and the sustainability of the building going forward. What we also heard from the people, they understood the implications of sea level rise and the challenges, potential challenges with the California Coastal Commission. So even though they liked some of the ambitious renovation options, they understood that there are challenges associated that, hence the recommended option to no structural change, no additional floor area, and all understood that there is risk of damage, even putting aside anticipated sea level rise, there's risk of damage and closure over that expected 75-year life of the building as a result of storm or high water. Moving on to the Pier Amphitheater and Bandshell, what really prompted, I think, this feasibility study in first place is the deteriorating condition of the concrete work at the seating. Concrete spalling is really essentially exposing steel reinforcing, which is setting into motion a cycle of deterioration that will continue—
Apologies.
—that will continue, and eventually, at some point, things such as a stair nosing falling off will force you to close portions of the amphitheater and engage in some of the repairs that are discussed. We actually looked at five total options when we looked at seating configurations for that. The two on the right, terrace seating option and the ramped option, I can discuss later in question and answer, but they were pretty much seen as either not feasible or not of interest, and so those were pretty quickly discarded. And we presented to the community two options to look at, and they, again, I can talk about them more in the discussion, but they generally share a venue elevator. The only difference was the size of entrance and exit from the facilities. But that, at the community meeting, interestingly enough, we did get a lot of input of, please pursue an option that does not require a vote or an exception to proposition A. And so we went back to the drawing table, and based on that, we are coming back to you with the recommended option of alternate option C based on that community input. In terms of capacity, we are just modestly increasing the seating capacity at the venue, importantly adding 24 wheelchair seats within the facility. Any rehabilitation of this facility of this magnitude will simply require you to accommodate the disabled in a way that's appropriate. Here in this site cross-section showing the existing condition, North Pacific Street on the left, the Strand on the right, this is really a diagram illustrating what is required as far as ADA or disabled access for wheelchair patrons. We must place them and disperse them throughout the facility. They cannot be aggregated at the top or at the bottom, but distributed as able-bodied participants are throughout the facility, and they must be configured in such a way that they can, a wheel person seated in a wheelchair can see over a standing patron in front. All of that's a long way to say that this facility, rather than being repaired, must be reconstructed, because its configuration is different precisely because of accommodation of disabled. Along with that, we are increasing aisle width, and that is another code requirement to provide safe, code-compliant emergency egress from the aisles, making them slightly wider per current code, but that also provides comfort for those attending that. So this aerial view essentially shows an aerial view of the recommended option, which requires no exception to proposition A, no element of the proposed recommendation extends above the elevation of North Pacific Street. It illustrates the no elevator entrances provided at North Pacific Street, and in lieu of that, a ramp that provides disabled access to what we refer to as a mid-level cross aisle where the wheelchair seats arrive. So here you see in this rendering, looking towards the southwest, that we have essentially minimized any of the exit and entrance, so that we are actually pulled up as snug as we can to the sidewalk at North Pacific Street. That way, we are more closely following the general configuration and outline of the existing amphitheater and proposing planters that actually have coastal vegetation to, again, more, in a better way, integrate with the coastal bluff that surrounds or adjoins this facility. And there you see the ramp access that provides you access from North Pacific Street to the mid-level. Flipping the view around, now looking to the northeast, again, no exception to proposition A is required. The bandshell height is capped at an elevation below Pacific Street, no elevator entrance at North Pacific Street, instead a disabled ramp access in the bluff area behind the Beach Operations Center. And I'm going to now take you through each level to just show what's actually included within the amphitheater, starting at street level, again, showing you the ramp entrance point right off of the sidewalk from North Pacific Street, taking you to a mid-level cross aisle that connects you to both wheelchair seating, but also to access from the Pier Bridge side by way of a disabled access lift. Peeling a layer off, we're now down one level at that mid-level cross aisle, and it's showing the existence of the wheelchair seating, and again, that disabled lift that provides a secondary means of access to the facility from the Pier Bridge elevator that's anticipated to be included in that project. But here you can pick up the disabled access elevator for this site at this lower level, which will take you to the Strand level. In both of those levels, restrooms are built below the seating and plentiful storage for event logistics and production support and other things, such as barricade fences or other equipment that's associated with holding community events there. Turning to the bandshell itself, as your packet shows to you, its existing height is 23 feet 10 inches from Strand level. As you know, for most events, or many events, you do need to build overhead rigging to support lighting and sound systems, primarily to get essentially light at the front of faces of people on the stage. So you're forced, with the current configuration, to often build that structure. With the new structure, we want to build that into the structure itself, but propose in the recommended option a structure, again, below the elevation of North Pacific Street, capped out at 29 feet, and in that hardened new structure, we would include the lighting and sound infrastructure to support that rigging, so that you're not rebuilding it every time that you're actually having an event. It's actually included within the structure of the building. As I noted, restrooms and storage are built below the seating, access from both sides of the seating area. This diagram just illustrates that one of the options we considered was, there's a best practice recommendation for interior stage volume, but we did conclude with the community that that exceeds, again, the height limit of proposition A, and therefore, we can. It's really a recommendation, it's a best practice, it's not a must-do, and we can confirm to you that the lower-height bandshell will accommodate all kinds of events, performances, and a variety of functions there, keeping below the level or the elevation of North Pacific Street. Strand level plan illustrating that the bandshell itself has 625 square feet of backstage area, including dressing rooms, a restroom, a green room, basically lighting and sound control panels, and a disabled access ramp, because we have to get both performers up there, but it's large enough to bring equipment onto stage, it's designed for that reason. And as you see, the additional storage built essentially under the seating and the restrooms that are serving both sides of the seating arrangement as well. If you are the bandshell looking north towards the Community Center, you can see that the plaza is clearly opened up, and this will really serve you as you co-program events between both the Community Center and the amphitheater facility. But again, a hardened bandshell structure that built into the ceilings and roof structure is the infrastructure to support sound and lighting systems. I do draw your attention that because of the lower profile, we still need to get light on the performers at the front of the stage, and that will require us looking at adding lighting on poles to provide that lighting at the face of the stage. So we are recommending a closed bandshell, meaning no openings to the back or to the ocean, the recommended low height below the elevation of Pacific Street with the infrastructure built in to support all the events that are programmed for that. With regard to the design, just a moment, of course, our starting point with the community should be the design of the architectural character that currently exists, but it's important to kind of point out and remind that as we venture down into, there've been a number of bandshells on this site, each reflecting the taste of a generation of Oceansiders before you who built bandshells in that place. There's a lot to draw from as we consider going forward into a design phase, but certainly the starting point is the much-loved bandshell that currently exists. But it's really just saying that in a future design phase, we have many things to turn to in this architecturally significant city in terms of how we can actually distinguish it and also basically tie it to much-loved elements within the city, or even pick up on comments that were made in the design process about incorporating some of the Art Deco influences that are present in the existing facility. So in summary, several options were reviewed. We did study a taller bandshell height, but have discarded that recommendation and are presenting to you a reduced height, closed bandshell that basically stays below the elevation of North Pacific Street. What we heard at the community meeting, at the final community meeting, was, bring on, as you go forward in future design procedures, make sure you include the technical expertise to ensure that this bandshell, as designed, will accommodate the wide range of cultural festivities, music performance, theatrical performance that goes on here. Ensure that it is truly multipurpose and serves all of those purposes. Equally important is ensure the facility remains physically and financially accessible to all members of the Oceanside community, a very big concern with many of the participants in the process. With regard to design, while we're not in a design phase, there was a range of opinions. Many liked and appreciated tying to some of the city's landmarks, the Irving Gill architecture, for example, but many also said, please do things to kind of recall the existing bandshell, this much-loved bandshell that they have grown up with and have strong sentimental attachment to. Now, in this study, we did look at a long-range concept study for Betty's Lot, and I want to emphasize, this is not a part of the community priorities that were identified in this process, it's an illustration of a potential long-range, future concept option for your consideration. Reemphasizing that the Community Center, the amphitheater and bandshell, and the plaza in between are the focus and the priorities of this feasibility study, but we do provide this to you for your information, just as a future long-range planning option to think about. Best way to describe it is essentially in cross-section, with North Pacific being on the left-hand side, the Strand being on the right. What would be left absolutely in place is the Strand level parking, right at grade at Strand level, as you see there, but we're able to increase it from the 111 spaces that are currently there to 128, building up above that essentially a deck, if you will, 13 feet above that, which would be the site of a new mid-level beachfront park, and at that deck, four community recreation classrooms, all above anticipated sea level height. In other words, conditioned, critical infrastructure is pulled up above anticipated sea level rise at about 13 feet in this case. Descending from North Pacific Street is a terraced, street-side park with coastal vegetation stepping down from the street, opening up vistas to the beach. Here you're seeing an overhead view illustrating that it's essentially placing a park over parking. It's essentially retaining the parking function that's there, but then finding community recreation and park uses, multipurpose basketball courts, other space, and then essentially a coastal park that steps down from North Pacific Street. These other views, this is a view from North Pacific Street, it has a low profile, completely maintaining vista from over it, from North Pacific Street on the left, and then looking from the right, the opportunity to actually open up the parking structure to the beach, so that actually surfers and others using it can walk directly from parking spaces to the Strand, and even just appreciate when they're in there. What we heard relative to Betty's Lot, many liked the multi-use courts, the recreation areas, the park built over parking. Several appreciated that the concept is forward-looking, in other words, it's anticipating in some future way projected sea level rise and how one can accommodate community recreation at the beachfront. Many want to expand or even exchange the concept to add more parking. This was a kind of frequent comment from the community, give us more parking in this location, and this seems like an opportunity or a strategy to do that. But some feel very strongly that there should be zero change to Betty's Lot. It's a much-loved existing place for surfers and the community to gather simply at the beachfront. Very briefly on cost, and I figured there'll be a lot of discussion at this, happy to answer any questions during the discussions, so I'm going to very briefly summarize what's in your packet. We have provided to you a recommended construction budget. We've also estimated anticipated city soft cost for completing a project of this type. So the recommended construction budget for the Junior Seale Beach Community Center is about 11.4 million. The projected soft cost at about 25% of that cost for the owner's soft cost or client or city's soft cost at about 2.8 million, for a total recommended budget of about 14.2 million. I do want to emphasize, though, this includes the full menu of options or possibilities for renovating that facility. It is up to you to decide on how much of that. You can treat it as an à la carte. In other words, you can pick and choose how much to do in that. So that's really what we would consider the upper level of renovation of that facility, bringing in all of the things that I was discussing. Now, for purpose of cost escalation, time is money, all of you know construction inflation, so what we've had to do is assume a hypothetical project construction start date. We do not have a targeted date, but we, for the purpose of giving you an estimate that looks further into the future, we assumed a hypothetical construction start of April 2024. Again, that's to build in some important construction inflation, or what we call escalation into the project budget. So that is accounted for in these numbers that you have. With regard to the Pier Amphitheater and Bandshell, the recommended construction budget is about 31.6 million, soft cost at about 6 million, for a total project cost about 38 million. Because of the longer environmental period for dealing with the permit for the bandshell that Dara will be talking about, we pushed the construction start date for in this hypothetical exercise out to April of 2025.
Thank you, Steve. In summary, if the feasibility study is approved, staff would proceed with preliminary design and environmental review. Staff proposes to evaluate and plan the area cohesively, so we would consolidate the environmental document efforts with the Phase Two and Pierview Way Lifeguard Headquarters The eventual goal is to have shovel-ready projects for potential grant funding. Therefore, staff intends to bring a professional services agreement amendment with Johnson Favreau to continue the next phase of design— to continue the next phase of design, which would be brought before City Council at a later date. If approved by City Council, staff would commence to the environmental review and documentation in accordance with SEQA, and it's anticipated that the preparation of a programmatic environmental impact report, a PER, would be utilized for both projects. The portion of the PER, PEIR, for the beachfront improvement feasibility is estimated at approximately 700,000. However, since the consolidated environmental review costs for the pier bridge and Phase Two study are unknown at this time, refined project costs would be presented at the time the Pier Viewway Bridge and Lifeguard Headquarters Project is brought before City Council for approval, which is anticipated in early 2023. Priority bringing this item before you today, it was presented to the city's Park and Recreation Commission on October 12, 2022. Commission voted 6-2 in favor of staff-recommended options. Of the commissioners that voted no, some of the concerns included making future investments in facilities that are near sea level, as well as concerns with costs and timelines. There were five public speakers at the Park and Recreation Commission meeting. Generally, there was support for staff's recommended options, but there was some concerns with project costs, project funding sources, timelines, potential loss of the Junior Seau name associated with these facilities, and just in general, an insufficient number of gymnasiums in the city. At this time, as costs are still unknown, staff is requesting that action not be taken on the third item, the appropriation of funding. Therefore, to clarify, today, staff is recommending that City Council take the following actions: receive and concur with staff's recommended options for the feasibility study, and authorize staff to proceed with preliminary design plans and environmental review of Phase Two in coordination with the Pier Viewway Lifeguard and Headquarters Project. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak? I see several people have been involved.
Oh, for those of you who may not know, the kiosk is where you would sign up to speak on this item. But currently, right now, we don't have anybody registered to speak on the item right now.
Why don't we pause a moment?
So if you wish to speak on this item, the two kiosks that are at the top there where Ms. Hammerschmidt is at, you could register to speak on this item. And Larry, there's another one right there. We have--
How about we do this? People wish to speak, please approach the podium, state your name, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
There you go.
Larry, I think we can say who you are, but, you know, do, for the record, say your name and--
That's Larry Berry. I haven't been around for a while doing this stuff. And you know what? A lot of you have grayer hair now, but I'm not noticing that. My name is Larry Berry. I live on 3972 Brown Street, City Oceanside. I own three houses in Oceanside, and I'm a 30, no, a 42-year resident of Oceanside. And been around here a long time. I see this, and one of the things I want to put out, that the bandshell and all that and the Junior Seau complex is going to stay the way it is. It's a historical monument, and we've already, all the Oceanside residents have agreed on that. But the things that we, this is not going to be like Humphreys by the Bay. Is that what we're looking for? Or is this supposed to be, you know, at the Moonlight Theater down in, you know, in Vista? Or what, in, you know, in Balboa Park? Are we, you know, the Oregon Pavilion? Is this what we're, where are we going with this? I mean, I think we're just throwing a bunch of money at this thing, and we're asking people to, you know, sign on and do this. The great things about Oceanside, and the one thing I want to leave you with, and my time's short, but local, local, local. I've been to a bunch of these meetings that we had here, and the thing is that we, keep it local. I agree that we need cosmetics, we can do certain things. We saw, what, Esther knows this, about 10, 15 years ago, they tried to bring in big-name stars in the bandshell and stuff, but the casinos have those, and we lost that opportunity, and they didn't want to come here. Keep it local. I think about the sunrise service at our, at the beach. I think about the turkey trot, and everybody hanging out there. I think about the Samoan rituals and their having their, you know, their parade and doing things. Let's keep it local. Let's keep, I kind of see that we're squeezing out the locals so we can get tax revenue, and it just, it drives the people crazy. It drives the people, you know, I think we're, we think we're going to get money, and we're going to anticipate things, and maybe the crowd that's going to come in there, you know, maybe they play the piano, and my wife's a concert pianist, but, and they drinking wine and stuff. Oceanside people just want to go to the beach and watch the sunset. And I think that, you know, make it too fancy for us, you know, that's us. That's, you know, we lose that. And I think about certain things, and sometimes we get thinking about tax revenues and how we're going to make our image better and stuff. We look great. I'm sorry, folks. We look great in the world. So that's my words.
Thank you, Larry. If you wish to speak, please approach the podium, state your name. You have up to three minutes. Come on up. John, you going to speak? We'd love to hear your thoughts. Mary, we've got a few commissioners here. We'd love to hear your thoughts here.
Good afternoon. Arlene Hammerschmidt, ruralish Fire Mountain. I wish this was in the evening instead of the afternoon, so that all of our working-class residents could come and express their local, 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 just as this gentleman said, I'd like to see this council have workshops in the evenings, period. So the biggest thing that, my biggest concern here is if we need more gymnasium space, and we need full-on recreation community centers, like three of them in this city, minimum, three of them, with gymnasiums, classrooms, et cetera. Can we start taking action now to build one of them and get it finished before renovations on the Junior Seau Beach Center close down the only real gym, one of two in the city? Because when that happens, we're only going to have one. And our kids and the recreation programs and all of the prevention and potential prevention activities that Parks and Recreation and our community groups run to keep kids busy, engaged, healthy, safe, and off the street and alive, lose their place. So I'm telling you, please, don't run the locals out of the local places. Provide another place or double before this happens. Get the wheels churning, get it started, please. Our locals need it, our kids need it. We're losing them in a lot of different ways. Thank you for your time and this opportunity.
Thank you.
John Daly, 392 Islander Street, Oceanside, of course. Honorable Mayor, City Council members, it's nice to see you guys again. It's wonderful not to come to meetings and expect that you guys keep doing a good job. So the reason I'm here today is because we're talking about facilities that are old, very old. We're talking about facilities that have been changed many times, many times, not just once, but many times. We're talking about the people, the locals, being able to use this place. Mr. Berry spoke about, I think he counted about seven items that might have happened at the bandshell. I'm pretty sure he's aware there's 365 days a year, a lot of things that don't happen. The community center, for now, I think that's great. Do what you have to do to keep it the way it is, because there's really no good use for that building. Yes, we have a gym in there. They have no parking for the gym for six months out of here, and it needs to be replicated in other parts of the city. Other council members dropped the ball years ago and didn't add gyms. That's on them, your problem now. So that's fine.
Thank you.
The bandshell, unfortunately, is a situation where it's not attractive for using it anymore. It doesn't provide what it needs for handicapped other individuals, so I clearly see a large need for change there. So I support staff recommendation. I think you should fund this thing at this point, make sure it's going to move on without any difficulty, because it does take a lot of study to provide the answers to what's going to happen here. You know, they talk about losing Seau's name on something down there. There will be something with Seau's name on it, always. I'm surprised we don't have a statue. We should have a statue. But the fact that that's a consideration for not changing things, I don't think Junior would be in favor of that. The change is compelling. It's necessary, and I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Wilson? Would you like to speak? Mary Seau, would you like to speak?
Annette. Good evening, or good afternoon, early afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity. My name's Annette Seau Soto. Yes, I am one of Junior's siblings. Basically, I'm not here to talk about the name itself, just like that gentleman was saying, you know, it's a historical building. In regards to the usage of the empathy, not the empathy, but the community center, unfortunately, that has been closed to the access of the community for years. It's not nothing new. It's been going on for many years. And so to get it open would be a great, great opportunity for our youth. So my thing is, you know, just like she said, in regards to making sure that the wheel is turning, having another location open, you know, you got your Baldorama, you have Melba Bishop, making sure that there's going to be a facility open for the youth to utilize while that building is being restored. I do agree that it needs to be restored, and so I would ask that, you know, we go ahead and approve the information in regards to the staff requesting for funding to, I mean, you got to really, there's steps. So getting it to the next level, to get it approved by the engineers, you know, there's a lot of the contractors, the permits. If we can get that going now and not delaying it, you know, because we do need your guys' approval, I say let's go ahead, move forward, and get this going, because it's not going to go away. Those two buildings do, it needs to be restored. And it being that it is historical, not necessarily that it has my brother's name on it, it's a historical building that needs to be restored and utilized for the community. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Seau Soto. Commissioner, Lisa, Ms. Russell, Commissioner Russell, would you like to speak?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm Lisa Russell, longtime resident, 1960. I echo what my fellow friends were saying about needing another gym. I think we need to stop talking about it and start getting something done, and I don't know how or when we're going to start, but we've had a lot of meetings on the center, Junior Seau Center, the amphitheater. And I'm thinking, like Arlene said, we need another gym before we start working on the Seau, Junior Seau Beach Center. The Melba Bishop is all we have. So I don't know where we're going to build or how we're going to build, and it might take years, but I think we need to get busy and do something. And, you know, it's nice to get the public to come and to the meetings, and I've been to a lot of meetings, and I want to start working on where we're going. I'd like to, and I don't know how I can help. I am a new Parks and Rec Commissioner, and we're trying to build something here, or not build it, it's already built. We're trying to keep it going for our youth. And I do know that we do have things going on at the Junior Seau Center. I've seen a program that's out, and I just think it maybe needs to be publicized a little bit more so that we can get more people using that gym. I know the parking is a bear. That parking's been a bear forever. But you know what? Parents like me want their kids to be playing at that center. They find a way to park, and they get down there, they get their kids down there, the kids have fun. You see the smiling kids, that's what I want to see. So I don't know where we can get our third gym, but I'm open. I don't know where we're going to get the money for it, but let's find it, and let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Joyce, my apologies.
It's just such great timing, Honorable Mayor and Council. The Oceanside Unified School District has authorized Measure W funds to build a full-size gym at the new Jefferson campus, and I would love it if our two organizations could work together to make sure that the community has access to that in non-school hours when we don't have teams using it. I think that would be a great way to bring together these two co-mingling solutions. The other piece is, while we're looking at investing a lot of money and resources into the amphitheater, sometimes that comes with the idea that we need to offer a whole lot more extra protection for those resources that are going in. And one of the beautiful things about the amphitheater right now is that you can go by it anytime on the weekends and see step classes or yoga classes for people that are using that space in a public, community, congregant setting. And that's one of the really beautiful pieces about the amphitheater, and I would hate to lose that, because we are investing and starting to think of this as a more privatized space versus a public space that we want to keep open. So thank you.
Thank you. Skating, too. Yeah. Anyone else wishing to speak before we start to hear from our council members? Ms. Wayne Godney, did you want to, did you want to?
Mayor Sanchez, I'm very proud of everybody here. We are here to resolve everything here in Oceanside concerning youth.
Could you speak in the mic? Thank you.
We are here to resolve everything concerning youth here in Oceanside, and today, we would like to resolve everything. We have all the resources. We've had plenty of investors come here to Oceanside. We've had many mayors that have passed through, and now everything's in your hands, Ms. Sanchez, and as mayor. And so we're very proud of everybody here. And so we want the resources to be given so we can put everything together for this new coming season for 2023. And then all the budgets that we have here in Oceanside, maybe we can take from the budgets that we're really not using, that might be Ms. Atlantis, to provide that for the children. We have all the charities here, we have the local churches, we got some of the greatest leaders that are here. Everything has been left here from all the grandmas and grandpas and mothers and fathers that left all these, you know, remedies here for all of us. So now, everything is-- So now everything is solved. All we ask is that you set everything aside for the boys' clubs or the girls' clubs or anything supporting youth, so we can bring everything here. We need unlimited basketball courts here. We need inside arenas for the youth, and we like to have access to the football field. So maybe we can work things out with all the high schools here in Oceanside, where if anything that we need with Zimmerman or anybody with any organization with Pop Warner, no kid left behind this year, 2022, 2023. So we've been praying, we've been praying for years, and our prayers have been answered. And may everybody have grievance concerning these matters today. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Real quickly, can you state your name for the record?
I'm here in behalf of the Oceanside Park. I'm here in the private, here in behalf of the Thunman and here in Odell Estate. So I speak in behalf of our family estate.
I just need your name.
Thank you.
Oh, your name.
What's that?
Your name.
Your name, just for the record.
My name is King Solomon II. That's my name. Thank you very much.
Tim Sullivan?
Yeah.
The second.
One passport, Solomon the Second King.
Got it. Thank you. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, we're going to go ahead and bring this back to the council. And there are no lights. Councilmember Weiss.
There's just a couple of observations. So from looking at the outreach, it looks like you had, with everything, discovery option development final documents, 12 community meetings, two Parks and Rec Commission meetings, and city council workshop. I'm presuming that those community meetings and workshops, were they poorly attended, fairly attended, well-attended?
The first one had about 100, right?
Councilmember Weiss, Honorable Mayor, council members. The first meeting we had had very large attendance. I do not have the exact number. I would say it was standing room only. There was some misinformation that was originally expressed, which I think caused some confusion, and we've clarified. But since then, we've had, I would say, good attendance at our public outreach meetings. I don't have the exact numbers, but anywhere from 40 to 50 people. And at our commission and committee meetings that we have presented in front of the various commissions and committees, we've had not as much attendance at those.
Thank you. I would like to say that, and I appreciate Eric's comments about the Jefferson, but, you know, right now, we don't have, I believe, an effective joint use agreement with the schools, but there is an indoor gym at MLK Middle School, El Camino and Oceanside High Schools, and hopefully, they might become available if we develop some type of a reasonable joint use agreement. And we also had a comprehensive and a complete gym design for Baldorama that kind of got sidelined. And, I mean, if there's an interest in putting it there, it's probably one of the few sites that we could put a full-size gym. But right now, we're being asked to support and approve what is the next phase, which is going into some preliminary design and environmental review, which is going to look at alternatives and options as well. So I think for the purposes of the environmental review, I will make a motion that we approve staff's recommendations. And I would like to include in there, at least for the environmental review, the option for Betty's Lot as well. So that's my motion.
Councilmember Jensen.
Hi. So it was my understanding that if we restore anything down there, we have to make it ADA compliant, correct?
Councilmember Jensen, Honorable Mayor, council members, I'd like to actually bring Steve Johnson up, our consultant, because he can speak more into the details. But yes, that is my understanding, and I can let him clarify that.
Yeah, when it comes to federal ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act, there's a fairly low valuation threshold that if you go above that, you trigger what are referred to as minimum path of travel requirements. That's access from a disabled parking space to the entrance of the building, to accessible restrooms, to drinking fountain, to transit, et cetera. Then it steps up to if you touch something, if you touch something, you have to bring it up to current code. So in other words, if you're just fixing the air conditioning at Junior Seau, you're not triggering this, because that's more than likely a valuation below. But if you exceed that dollar valuation, which is somewhere in the neighborhood, I think of about $170,000 or so, then it triggers these other things. And then if you touch it, you own it, you have to fix it. In the case of the amphitheater, its sole function is to sit and enjoy a community festival or an event or a performance or sit there and watch the beach. You can't deny, its sole function is sitting there doing that, so we have to provide accessible accommodation there. And there are, again, as I said, rules to provide equity, meaning it's equitable distribution. Hence, the need, given the expenditure to repair, even if you use the word repair to the facility, the cost of repairing that facility far exceeds the valuation, so you're essentially required to bring it to current code.
That's what I thought. Because you can go down there and see the, you know, the crumbling, you could see the rusty rebar sticking out, and even if we just wanted to fix that, we would still have to do all of this.
You trigger what I'm saying, because the state has an interest. They don't want you just fixing pretty things or even functional things without accommodating the disabled. That's basically what is behind this minimum threshold for improvements.
Thank you. So at this point, we're just moving on to the next step, so we can have a shovel-ready project when grant funds become available, correct?
Councilmember Jensen, Honorable Mayor, council members, yes, this would help us proceed to the next phase, which is environmental documentation and permitting. And we would need some preliminary design in order to do that, to get clearance, and then we could proceed to final design. So we're just asking for the next phase is preliminary and environmental clearance.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to vote against the motion unless it could be somehow fixed. The idea, and you can have a seat now.
Oh, sure.
I attended most of the community meetings, and with all due respect to staff, the reason why they were standing room only at the first meeting was because there were suggestions that there was going to, that there were going to be changes to the Beach Community Center, especially that. And that was especially, that Beach Community Center, the Junior Seau Beach Community Center is especially thought well of. Many kids have used that center regardless of the challenges for parking. That one, that especially was a big concern. And I do look forward to opening up that public parkland space in front to pickleball or shuttle board or badminton. I think we haven't really decided. Hopefully, it can be something that could be like a multi-use kind of court or whatever, but certainly something for the public to be able to do. Right now, we've got vendors there that are probably not in compliance with our vendor program, because they are in public parkland. My concern here is the Betty's Lot, because that didn't come out until the very end, was not vetted by the public well. And I believe there's going to be a lot of pushback on that, and we're going to be hearing from the community. So I would rather go slower on that. I don't think that that's something that we have to put on at this point, because I know that the priority for staff and certainly for us is a pier. The pier needs to go first. It is crumbling, and it is becoming a dangerous situation, and the pier is something like $38 million. So that certainly is going to be the first project that goes forward over this. So moving really quickly on this won't really get us there faster, because the pier does have to go first. So I would ask the maker and the second to take out that part of it as we try to get the funding for the pier, which I think with the infrastructure funds that are going to be coming, I think it was, what was it, $100 billion that are going to be coming to California? Maybe that would be funded. I don't know that revisiting a project, Phase One, that we just completed, that took a couple of years to do, and with all the delays, is something we really need to work on now. But I did attend most of the meetings. I think that there was concern about ensuring that these public spaces remain accessible by the, by Oceansiders, by the locals, that things continue on, the kind of activities that we see there now, continue and maybe, you know, multiply, be enhanced. The idea of using the Beach Community Center as a place where you can show art, like in the hallway there, it was a great idea. I think that was an idea that came from someone from the Arts Commission. But there are, there were a lot of ideas that came out that were really good. I think the need, I believe our Parks and Rec planning document indicates that we need four point something basketball courts? Was it five? I believe it's four point something, like 4.3 or something. So that would really mean five. And we only have two at this point. I believe we were counting the Boys and Girls Club basketball court at some point. So at some point, we were saying we had three, but that has really clearly not, it is no longer available to the public, and so we really just have the two. So Councilmember Weiss, would you be willing to change your motion to?
I have a question for staff. So the only thing we're doing with this action is going to go into environmental review. As part of that environmental review, if Betty's Lot's included, the public will have every opportunity to comment. And when that environmental document comes forward, the council at that time will have the option of leaving it in or removing it, depending on what the public sentiment is. Would that be an accurate statement?
Honorable Mayor and council members, yes, that would be an accurate statement. Including Betty's Lot would change the scope a little bit, because right now, we're not anticipating getting into the next level of design on that portion of the project. So there is additional work that would be done to, that would need to be done to get to the level of design we would need for environmental clearance on Betty's Lot. So yes, but to answer your question, yes, but I just want to make sure that I'm clear that it would require some additional design services that we had not anticipated at this point.
I understand, but we're not approving any kind of expenditure of money that was removed from this item, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. As a matter of fact, as was mentioned, and just to reiterate what Ms. Wood said earlier, the next step is to bring essentially a professional services agreement back that'll have all this work scope. So it would, if your motion was successful, would include that additional design work, and we would all be wrapped into the agreement that we were brought forward, including the final cost for this next phase of review.
I would like to keep it in for the purposes of the environmental review, and if at some point we remove it, we remove it.
Okay, well, I did listen to the reaction of people for that, and I really felt that it needed a lot more work before the community. And I think it would show bad will on the city council if we included this point, especially when it was thrown out there at the very last minute and say, hey, this is for the future, like after this project is done, this could be another step. That's the way it was presented. If we're now going to say we're going forward with this, I think that that is not going to make us look good. So Councilmember Rodriguez.
I completely disagree with the mayor. I don't think we're going ahead of the public. We're just including documents as the city council on the environmental study of a lot that's just used for parking, expanding that parking and expanding spaces for the community. This area is Oceanside. It belongs to them. And I think in being a good steward for the future of our city, to have as much space as possible near the beach, we need more parking, we need more community centers, we need more space on the beach for Oceanside residents. And including this as a part of the study, even though it's going to cost a little more on the designs side of it, I think, I personally believe the coastal commission will appreciate, you know, projects like this. I think including this is using strategic foresight. It's looking at the future of our city, and we're taking a parking lot that I regularly park at and turning it into something better for the community. And as a part of this review, the community will participate, they will give their feedback, and at some future date, whoever sits on this dais will make a decision. But I think it's wise to include it. Something needs to be done to improve that space. So I definitely support seconding that motion.
Deputy Mayor Keim.
Just a couple of quick questions for staff. So we, doing the beachfront improvements that we just finished, we got grant funding for that, correct? About, what, $7 to $8 million?
Honorable Mayor and council members, yes, that's correct.
So and how, what made us stick out or viable to get that grant funding?
From my estimation, I would say the fact that we had a shovel-ready project that was ready to go, and it just happened to coincide with the ability to secure that grant funding from our legislature.
Okay, so if we have, as the mayor pointed out earlier, possibly $100 billion coming to California for resiliency and infrastructure, if we had shovel-ready projects and did our due diligence before, would it be fair to say that we'd have a better shot at getting more grant funding to Oceanside?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's why I think it's just in the best interest of everyone to expand the scope. It's not meaning we're doing anything. It just puts us in a good position to get everything we can for Oceanside residents. So I'm also going to be supporting the motion.
Thank you. So just to correct that information, we had not received any money from the state for, I don't know, decades until we were represented by Tasha Poyner-Horvath, who was able to secure the funds because of her position within the legislature. We are not going to have her anymore. So I imagine we're, for our ability to attract funds for this kind of a project will be more difficult at the state level.
So that $100 billion's coming from the state? I thought it was coming from the federal government.
60 is coming from the state and another 40 is coming from the feds. Let's vote.
Exactly.
Sanchez, no.
Thank you. Item number two is public communication on city council matters on off-agenda items. Do we have anyone requesting to speak on off-agenda items? Understanding you weren't, didn't understand that we don't have paper slips anymore? Okay, Mr. Berry? No? Okay. Thank you then. We are adjourned to next Wednesday, November 2nd, to city council meeting, 3:30 November 2nd. Thank you.